Hello, this is Jeremy from the Commissioner's Office. I just wanted to check in. Are we expecting Commissioner Levy for this item?
Yes, and I just texted her.
Okay, thank you. I'll wait to start the webinar until we know what her status is.
Thanks, Matt. I texted her as well, so.
Well, she might get a text back.
And just a heads up that it looks like Bree or someone here got started our YouTube stream. So anything we say at this point could potentially be heard by members of the public on YouTube.
I guess, Jeremy, we hold on for a minute till Claire shows up. I have no reason to think she wouldn't.
Yeah, that seems like the right thing to do. I'll just hang tight. And then, just so everyone knows, once she's here, I'll start Zoom's webinar, and we'll wait about 30 seconds for it to let attendees into the room. And then, once they're in there, I'll check in with the Commissioners again, and we'll start a recording, and they'll get the meeting going.
I think she's joined. Here she is. Hey, Claire. All right, we're ready, Jeremy, when you are.
Okay, I'm gonna start the webinar and give Zoom a second to bring people into the room. All right, Commissioners, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
And we're recording.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is a meeting of the Boulder County Commissioners. It is August 24, 2021. All three Commissioners are present. And today, we're here to have a public meeting. So there's no public comment, just informational for on the Employee Benefits Workshop with Aon. This is an annual event where we get updated on how things are looking for healthcare. So where wants to jump in, please do.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Kelly Gonzalez. I'm the 2021 BAB Chair, and I have been a member of the BAB since 2017, representing Housing and Human Services. For the public record, I would like to start off by saying the Benefits Advisory Board is a large group of employees from Boulder County. We meet monthly and talk about various issues regarding health insurance benefits for Boulder County employees. This is an all-volunteer group, and I work with some extraordinary people that devote a considerable amount of time learning about benefits, insurance, and claims, and all things that are outside of their normal duties within the county and the work. And the time that they put in is critical, and I want to thank them for their contributions and recognize their time. I also want to thank Aon and the Budget Team and HR for their time in helping us understand the insurance world and guide us on our recommendations and decisions. And finally, I would like to thank you Commissioners for allowing us this opportunity to express our feedback and help inform the decisions of the county. For my colleagues, there are a lot of organizations that don't seek input from their employees regarding their health benefits and the overall financial stewardship of the organization. We are privileged to be able to have a voice. This board will have an upcoming recruitment for various vacant positions for 2022. And if this is something you are interested in, I would highly encourage you to apply. This year, the BAB did not have to make as many difficult decisions as they did last year. Aon will be sharing with you our recommendations and the results of our voting. But in many cases, the decisions were unanimous, and others generated some discussion and debate. The BAB looked at enhancements to our current plan to help address one of the county's highest drivers of planned costs in relation to cancer, and was tasked with reviewing the county's current diabetes management program and changes to that program due to the ending partnership of Levango and CVS. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ramona from our Budget Office for a fund balance review. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Good afternoon. This is Ramona Farino, CFO of Boulder County with the Office of Financial Management. And I want to welcome everyone today to this BAD presentation, prepared in collaboration with our benefits consultant, Aon, who, of course, is here today. Before we start looking at the performance of the plan and its future outlook, I want to sincerely thank you, Kelly, and all the county employees at City of the BAB for the hard work and tough decisions they've been helping us make over the last couple of years. You referenced it, Kelly. You know, last year at this time, the BAB recommended that we switch to Cigna's Local Plus Network to combat the financially unstable nature of the healthcare plan at the time. And I won't take a lot of time to discuss the switch, as Aon will include outcomes in their presentation. But I wanted to take the time to acknowledge that the BAB's tough decision did indeed prove very beneficial to the plan's stability. So we appreciate those tough choices. And again, this year, the BAB was asked to consider the changing financial landscape of healthcare costs and asked to make conservative recommendations again. So we do appreciate that. So thank you to the team. It truly has been a team effort. And I just want to make sure you all know that it doesn't go unnoticed. I know you'd all do this, you know, while you have your day jobs to do. And we do appreciate you taking the time that you do. As you'll see in Aon's presentation, the plan this year is performing much better than last year, in part due to those decisions. Unfortunately, we still have work to do to replenish the Health and Dental Fund Balance to a comfortable level after several years of deficits. That's just, you know, that is the history of the fund. As the Commissioners will recall, last week, you approved a final 2020 budget amendment, which was needed to close out the fund for the year. And that need was $2.7 million, which will result in a negative fund balance of approximately $1.9 million at the end of 2020. My office therefore is asking that the board consider additional funds to be added to the 2022 budget to, again, replenish the fund and keep working towards a more positive outcome. There are several options that we can consider, which Aon staff have included in their presentation. So I'll let them go over that with you as well. With that, I won't take any additional airtime. And I want to turn this over to Courtney Hutchison from Aon to begin the presentation.
Thank you, Ramona, and good afternoon, Boulder County Commissioners, staff on our panel today, as well as the public who may be tuning in. My name is Courtney Hutchison, and I'm with Aon. I'm based in our Denver, Colorado, office. And hopefully, my face looks familiar to some of you. I've been working with the county for almost 16 years, and it's a pleasure to be back with everybody today. I am joined by a variety of folks from Aon today. I will introduce them to you quickly, and then they'll all introduce themselves when they engage. We do have a presentation that we'll be going through. So I wasn't sure, Suzanne, if you wanted to pull that up now while I make introductions, and you can see everybody's face. And I will start by introducing Suzanne. So Suzanne Coleman is on the line. Hi, Suzanne. She is our Senior Benefit Consultant that works very closely with me in the county. We have Trey Sarsfield, who's a credentialed actuary on our team. And we also have Anthony Priscico, who is a credentialed actuary on our team. You'll hear a lot today from Trey and Anthony with respect to the financial data we'll be presenting. And then, last but certainly not least, we have Bree Crockett, who is an analyst on our team, and will be sharing some information with you today. And Suzanne, I saw the material there for a moment, but it seems to have gone away. Do we need to?
That's because the Zoom thing is sitting over top of making a slideshow. So I'm changing views, and I'm gonna reshare and hopefully get it into, yes, something that's large enough that you all will be able to actually see it. There we go.
There we go. Excellent. Wonderful, thank you.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, so these are the faces I just introduced. And then, to give you all a sense of our agenda today, if we go on to the next page, very similar agenda to prior years for those of you who have attended this workshop in the past. Although, thanks to the preview you just heard from Kelly and Ramona, we probably won't have to necessarily spend as much time in certain sections as we may have in the past, given the favorability of the experience and therefore the favorability of the renewal as a result. But as always, we will take a moment to talk about how the self-funded medical and pharmacy program is performing year-to-date and how that compares to the past. As I always say, before we can talk about where we're going, we have to take a look at where we've been, because that absolutely shapes and dictates where we're headed. With that, we'll be a look at the income statement, which, for lack of a better word, is like your balance sheet for the plan, money coming in versus money going out. And then, that will shape our 2022 renewal estimates, as well as recommendations, which we'll be presenting to you today on behalf of the Benefits Advisory Board. And then, an initial proposal of how those recommendations and projections feed into the ultimate rates or premiums that will be shared by the county and employees in 2022. And then, there is a lot of activity happening at both the state and federal level with respect to legislation and compliance impacting human resources and benefit programs specifically. So we've got a great deal of information in there to share with you today, and we can certainly dive as deep as you like into those topics before we conclude. So with that, I will pause just for a comment from our Board of Commissioners on that agenda, or any opening remarks before we jump in.
I just want to say thanks to the staff who's participated and got us here. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, and I also especially want to thank the BAB and Kelly for leading that effort. Your input is really, really, really helpful.
So I will add a pile on, and I agree. I've mentioned this before, but when I worked at City of Boulder, nothing like this happened. And we just, it was like a wizard coming from behind a curtain to announce what was going to go on. So it's really great. And I also got to say, if you want to go back a slide, I have never seen so many people happy working out.
Thanks for that commentary. I know I don't look that way when I work out either, Commissioner Jones. All right, well, then I will turn it over to my colleagues, Anthony and Trey, to walk us through some financials.
Great, thank you, Courtney. And just to check, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Sounds great, Anthony.
All right, thank you. So hi, everyone. My name is Anthony Priscico, and I am an actuarial analyst with Aon in the Denver office. So I work alongside Trey and deal with everything financial and budget-related. So before we get into really the meat of the presentation, we did want to give some high-level observations of your self-funded plan performance over the past couple of years, as well as year-to-date. So Slide 4 has a few tables and charts to help us sort of show that background. So if we look at the top-left chart on the slide, this is showing the total plan costs compared to the budgeted premiums for each year. So if the percentage is over 100% in the chart, this means that the costs surpass the budget for that year. And anything below 100% means there's a budget surplus. So focusing on medical and pharmacy bars, those left-most bars on the chart, you can see years 2018 through 2020 all ended over 100%. However, with 2021 year-to-date, and this is with data through June, we are about 9% below budget. Or in other words, on the chart, it's 90.9%. This is very welcoming news, since last year at this time, costs were actually 1.5% above budget. So that ratio last year at this time was 101.5%. So experience is trending in the right direction, especially after making the plan changes for 2021, which, just as a reminder, included removing the High PPO, Low PPO, and High Deductible Plan, and replacing them with two new plans, a Hybrid PPO and a Consumer High Deductible Health Plan. And just as a reminder too, we did include dental here in the chart. However, it is no longer self-funded, effective 1-1 of 2021. So we just wanted to include it for informational purposes to see on historical years. So moving to the enrollment section on the right, total enrollment has remained relatively stable over the past couple of years and year-to-date. Starting in 2021, you can see almost an even split between the new consumer HGHP plan and the hybrid PPO plan as well. It's good to see a good portion of the population in that High Deductible Health Plan, especially with how the plan is performing, which we'll get into details here in the next few slides. Now, the large claim activity in the bottom-right corner is another aspect worth pointing out, as there is currently 1.2 million attributed claimants over 100,000. And this accounts for about 11.7% of the overall medical claims year-to-date. It's a percentage that's a lot lower than the previous years. And as a comparison point, last year at this time, there were about 1.5 million attributed to large claims over 100,000. So about $300,000 less than last year at the same time. And in a later slide, we'll see in a bit more detail these large claimants and what plans are on as well. So we can go to the next slide, please. So Slide 5 takes your medical and pharmacy plan performance on a budget-to-cost basis and puts it in a more visual format. So as a quick reminder on how to read this graph, each vertical bar on the graph represents a month's total plan costs, while that horizontal line across the graph represents the budgeted premiums for the year. So when a bar goes above that line, it implies a budget deficit for that month, while a bar below, it implies a budget surplus. So it's completely normal to have individual months spike above that line as seasonality plays an important role. So for example, you can see during the later months of the plan year, like more specifically in November and December, claims usually pick up as members are hitting their deductibles and out-of-pocket maximums, leaving more cost on the plan. But what we look for is that, on average, costs are at or below that line. And as you recall, I mentioned the loss ratio year-to-date is 90.9%, which you can kind of see on the right six bars of the graph here. We're really only had a little bit of a spike in February, but it averages out to 90.9 year-to-date. So in the next slide, we'll get into a little more details on actual numbers. So you can go to the next slide, Suzanne. Thank you. So these next few slides look specifically at your 2021 year-to-date medical and RX plan performance on an aggregate and a by-plan basis. So this slide specifically focuses on the aggregate side, where we take the experience from your Hybrid PPO plan and combine it with the Consumer High Deductible Health Plan. So I know there are a lot of numbers on this slide, but the main takeaway here is the blue circled section at the bottom right, where it shows the total budget and the costs. So this is how that 90.9% figure was determined. And as a reminder, last year at the same time, that ratio was 101.5%. So moving to the next slide, we have the same layout, but only for the Hybrid PPO plan. So where the ratio for this specific plan is 106% circling that bottom right. So the plan is slightly above budget on an individual basis, but certainly nothing like what we were seeing last year in the High PPO plan, whereas almost hitting the high 100s, almost 200%. Now, since the combined ratio year-to-date is below 100 so far, this means that the High Deductible Health Plan is performing extremely well. So you can go to the next slide, Suzanne. So as you can see, the Consumer HGHP plan is really helping out the overall performance, being at a ratio of 36, about 36% below budget. So this is really typical with High Deductible Health Plans, as it usually exhibits improved consumerism from those numbers involved. So are there any questions on the last couple of slides? If not, I'll jump down to the Large Claimant Section on the next slide.
Yeah, I have a question. So the large claimants, that seeing seven people, that is a relief from two points of view, the cost of this plan. But more importantly, in my mind, that's a lot fewer people going through a healthcare crisis and the mental health issues around that. So that's good to know. And when you look at the previous slide about the, I guess, maybe it was two slides ago, it would, it accounts for us not going over 100%, it looks like to me.
Yeah, yeah, certainly. Definitely is helping out, definitely helping out on the overall ratio as well.
And I guess I follow the question. There's no way to predict that, obviously. But, you know, next year, we could budget, and it could be high again, for all we know.
Yeah, large claimants are very sporadic sometimes. Sometimes, you know, they can come and go very high. I think sometimes they can come in very low. So it's very, it's really sporadic and kind of, you know, hard to predict exactly. But that's, you know, kind of what we use. We use the rolling 24 months of experience and kind of average it out when we project costs.
Thank you.
All right, so we can go to Slide 7, Suzanne. All right, so this is the breakdown of the current members in your plans who have surpassed that $100,000 medical claim threshold level. So there are seven members totaling about 1.2 million in claims. And as I mentioned earlier, that last year at this time, total claims over 100,000 were about 1.5 million. So definitely helping out on the overall experience on that front. You can see a majority of those members are also in that PPO plan, which is contributing, which is a contributing factor to that 106% loss ratio specifically on that plan. But lastly, is you do currently have a specific stop-loss level in place of 450,000. So what this means is that if there is a member who surpasses 450,000 in total claims costs, then the county would be reimbursed for all claims above that level, essentially. But no one has set that threshold yet year-to-date. So any questions on this slide before I pass it over to Bree?
Anthony, it's Courtney. Sorry, Commissioner Jones, please go.
Yeah, just one question. When you compare these plans, the Hybrid to the Consumer plans, if I were young and healthy, I'd be on that Consumer plan. There's some selection bias in the outcomes here, isn't there?
Yes, yeah, for sure. And typically, in PPO plans, you currently have, or you usually have people that, you know, have maybe pre-existing conditions or know that they're might be using services a little bit more, selecting a PPO plan. And yeah, High Deductible Health Plans usually are consistent of younger, maybe, members who are not expecting that they're going to have some health issues in the coming years. So yeah, you're exactly right.
And Anthony, I don't know if this is the time to ask the question back. That's, well, just generally what you've been saying about the High Deductible Plan performing really well and the cost being so far below what we budgeted. Does that mean? Well, I guess, I think, you know, one thing we're still wondering is whether this is a plan that is also saving consumers money? Or is it just saving us money? In other words, were we, before we went to this plan, was the county overall spending more than we needed to spend? Or have we saved this money by shifting those costs to, well, shifting costs to consumers that are really beyond their ability to pay? It's, I don't really know exactly how to ask that question. But, you know, when people, like Commissioner Jones was alluding to, when you're young and healthy and you don't have a lot of expenses, it makes sense to be in a plan like that. But you have to go into it with your eyes wide open. So knowing that it is going to be a High Deductible Plan, so do we have any information about whether our employees and their dependents are ending up with costs that were really unanticipated and that they're not able to cover?
I'm happy to chime in, Anthony, if you like. This is Courtney.
Sure.
Sure, so it's a very, very good question, and I would answer that a couple of ways. And again, for the record, this is Courtney Hutchison with Aon. So in the appendix, we won't go there now, but we do reiterate what the actual plan designs are. And what I think is often a bit eye-opening is when we look at, when we designed the new Consumer Driven Plan for 2021, we went through a bunch of different iterations with the BAB on what that design should look like. And where we landed, if you recall, was a design that is simplified in a couple of ways. It is a design where the only exposure that the member has to worry about is their deductible. Once their deductible is satisfied, everything else after that point is paid for at 100%. And even before satisfying the deductible, anything deemed preventive by the U.S. Preventive Task Force is also covered at 100%, and that's by federal law. So while this plan does attract a younger demographic and/or a demographic that doesn't necessarily anticipate high medical expenses, it is also attractive to individuals who might value the simplicity of one number. They don't have to worry about co-pays or coinsurance or anything. It's just, they budget for that deductible, and then they're done. The other interesting factor is that when you look at the maximum out-of-pocket exposure between your two plans, the Consumer Driven Plan actually caps the members out of pocket at a lower amount than the PPO plan. So it's actually a lesser financial exposure to a member. The difference being, they might just have to incur that out-of-pocket faster, because they have to satisfy that bigger deductible. So in my opinion, it's a brilliant question, a brilliant psychological exercise in itself. Cash flow tolerance, cash flow tolerance actually plays even more into a member's plan selection than typically out-of-pocket exposure, because again, we've designed this plan to actually minimize an employee's out-of-pocket exposure. It's cash flow that tends to be the determining factor for people.
Thank you.
And to answer you, yeah, and to answer you more directly on the utilization side, yes, we do track things like hospital visits and length of stay and physician visits and ER and urgent care. We tend to like, we'd like to see a full year's worth of data on a new design before we can assess any meaningful trends. But we are watching that carefully to see, are we seeing a dramatic, you know, abandonment of all healthcare as a result of this design? Because that would be bad, and obviously not the intent. But we are tracking that very closely. But hopefully, that commentary helps your thought process a bit.
Yeah, that's really helpful. Thank you for reminding me that there are, there is a cap on out-of-pocket costs. So that's really helpful. Thanks.
My pleasure.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Bree Crockett, and I am the Health and Benefits Analyst from Aon. I work closely with Suzanne and Courtney. And in this next section, we are going to be discussing the utilization of programs that we put in place in the past couple of years, so we can see how our current programs are running. This first slide is discussing the Local Plus Network change. And you have seen this slide previously, but the two items I did want to point out is we updated the right-hand side of this chart right in the middle of your screen with data through July, as well as the two bullets that are directly underneath. So looking at the chart, looking at out-of-network plan spend, we are lower when looking at dollars, but higher when looking at percentage perspective. So essentially, we are holding steady right now. And then, the two bullets directly underneath the chart reflect data of that northern Colorado area, so Longmont, Loveland, and Greeley. And these two bullets are also right in line with what we were expecting, and we don't have any concerns. But we will continue to keep an eye on it for you guys. Next slide, Suzanne. All right, so this slide summarizes the utilization that we had with the AMINO tool. And a reminder of what that tool is, is it's a digital navigation tool that estimates cost and provides a booking service that looks for high-quality, low-cost providers and suggests that to members. And they offer to book that service for them. And then, a few key items I wanted to pull out of this slide are the logins, which we are already at 914 for just the first half of 2021 of this year, which has already doubled than what we had of all of last year in 2020, as well as we have already exceeded searches and appointment bookings, and we still have six months of data left. So essentially, we know and we can see that employees are using this tool to navigate. And down at the bottom, using AMINO's algorithm, we are at over $600,000 in total cost avoidance or in savings that is driven by members who are using this service.
Hey, Bree, it's Courtney. Before you move on, I'd love to just brag on behalf of the county for just a moment and share that, so AMINO is a national firm that we work, that lots of employers work with. And just in the past couple of weeks, I got an outreach from And just in the la- the past couple of weeks, I got an outreach from their CEO, um, who was so impressed with the county-specific adoption of this tool, evidenced here by these numbers. And he was asking, you know, how did you, how did you do it? What kind of communication did you use? And he's so excited about it. He was asking, um, to see if, if your, uh, marketing team and, and his marketing team could work together to create some sort of case study on the success here. So it's not every day that, um, we get called directly by CEOs of organizations that our clients partner with. And so I just wanted to say it was, I was very proud of all of you, um, to receive that call and you should be very proud of these results as well.
Awesome. Thank you for that Courtney. All right. This next slide goes into the utilization of a health advocate, uh, which as a reminder is a third-party support center that employees can call in and an advocate will be on the other line and they will assist them with claims and clinical guidance and will help them navigate their various benefits. And in the past year, data, the county has had over 500 total interactions. Um, and most of them are calling for, asking for assistance with provider claims, um, some billing assistance and locating those specialty providers. And then down at the bottom, per health advocates modeling, the savings for this year were just under $50,000, uh, showing that employees are also using this service as well. And then we can see on the far right, just some great testimonials that have been coming in from using this tool. Right. So a mid-year change that we made in 2021, uh, that is included in the projections for 2022 is the recovery one program. And it is a pilot program that will be running for about a year and a half. And it is a program that is focused on virtual physical therapy solutions. So members with different musculoskeletal issues such as neck pain and back pain, knee pain, um, they're able to get a welcome kit that is sent directly to their home and they're able to connect virtually with a physical therapist and they receive a customized solution to help them get the physical therapy they need without ever leaving the home. And on this slide near the bottom, it does say that, uh, there are currently 29 members enrolled, but we did get an update from Cigna that there are now up to 31 members that are enrolled, which is the second highest number of enrollments compared to other Cigna employer groups, which is fantastic. Um, and then since it is a pilot program, we don't have any savings right now, but that is something we'll keep checking and we will bring to you in the future. Okay. Another mid-year program that we rolled out this year was a Cigna, Cigna Cancer Support Program. And this was rolled out in June because cancer, um, is the second highest driver of plan costs. So we recognize that this is an immediate need, which is why this program was rolled out mid-year in June. And what this program does is it provides additional information for those that are diagnosed with cancer. So all members with cancer receive some sort of outreach from this program. And then they get assigned a personalized care plan with a coach and a nurse. And that helps them go through depending on where they are at in their different cancer stages. So if they are in remission, maybe they're just watching the member. If they are in the maintenance phase, they might be offering continued support. And so this program has the three pillars which are, uh, laid out at the bottom. And then the one I just kind of want to call it is they do offer personalized efficient and most importantly, affordable therapy to members with cancer. And this slide is the utilization management programs that is part of the Cigna administration contract that is already in place. And these changes happen every year. Uh, and these programs listed below is just one of the ways that Cigna is doing their best to make sure members access the correct programs and save the member and the plan money. And there's a lot of words on this slide, but the main takeaways from this slide is that there are two new programs that are being added this year and they're already included. And we just wanted to bring to your attention so you are aware of them. As this first one is being started on nine, one, so right around the corner. Uh, and that is radiology site of care. So a member needing advanced radiology like a MRI or a CT scan will be directed via an approval process to a free standing, high-quality, lower-cost setting. Um, and that one is estimated to save you about $27,000 per year by doing this redirection of care. And the second program that is being added doesn't start till 1-1 of 22 is the gastroenterology program. Um, and this is for providers performing endoscopies for GI procedures where they will need to submit, um, prior authorization prior to conducting the procedure. Um, and that is expected to save about $16,000 per year. Again, that's something that we'll go into a whole lot of detail, but since these two new programs, do you have the possibility of being visible to members? We just wanted to point out these changes that will soon be taking place. Are there any questions about any of the programs or utilization stats so far?
No.
All right. Then I will hand it back to Anthony.
Great. Thank you, Bree. All right. So this is the income statement slide. Um, this is with data through June of 2021, where we have the revenues in the top section, expenses at the bottom with the net gain-loss at the bottom row. So the right column here is showing 2021 year-to-date through June, while we're projecting the expenses and revenues for the second half of the year. And I have to note on this slide that this does not include the budget amendment that was approved last week. So while we are showing that $1.9 million gain, um, at the end of 2021, this is subject to ta- to change and updated projections will be performed to capture that amendment change. But overall, it is a good sign that claims are trending in a favorable direction, which is really helping that bottom line number for 2021. So any questions on, on this slide?
Uh, no questions, but could you just hold it here for a second? I'm just trying to run through all these lines just real quickly.
Sure.
Would it help to do an orientation of this? I, this may be new to our two newest commissioners. Would that be of value?
Uh, well, I just wanted to just have a little more time to try to absorb.
Okay, sure.
Yeah.
No, no, no problem. There's a lot here.
So the, so, okay, so we're running 1.9 million behind in expenses. Um, but as noted previously, because we have a negative fund balance, um, actually just about that much, right? Uh, after the transfer that we made, um, is, is that, that's about right? Um, so we're, you know, what, we may be back to about zero. Is that right?
I, I think, and, and Ramona, again, this is Courtney, please feel the time in Ramona, but I, I, I think that's directionally correct. You know, we're, we're reflecting that surplus, if you will, here, um, revenues versus expenses compared to the prior three years where you could see there was a, a, a growing deficit. Um, but what Ramona shared in her opening comments is that, that, um, that surplus that we're running, um, once we factor in the, the budget correction from 2020, that'll actually impact the 2021 number, even though it was a, a 2020 expense. Um, so we, we're going to work with Ramona and Erin and their teams to ensure that there's some alignment between how those numbers are tracked and reported by year on her end and so that we're doing the same on ours.
Yeah. And this is Ramona. I can just, like you said, just chime in, but what you said is exactly right. I mean, this is still a great, um, I loved seeing this. We're in, going in the right direction. You know, 2020 was, you know, a tough year, but you are correct that that number, you know, will, will decrease because of the amendment that we processed last week. And we are going to do a deep dive in the numbers, um, and make sure, you know, we're, we're comparing apples, apples to apples with Aon and, and get a good, good number for you before you have to make, you know, budget decisions, um, you know, in the near future. Um, so yeah, but you said it very well Courtney. It's, it's in the, going in the right direction. We're pleased with that.
Thanks. That's all. I, you can move on unless, um, Matt or Martha, Marta has anything on this.
Okay. Well, we will transition now into a go-forward view. We, we appreciate you taking a few moments to listen to some of that history. You know, far too often, um, if you're like me, you know, you, you vote on things and you approve things and then you, we, we never revisit them. So we thought you might see some value today in learning about how those programs at this board and, and your predecessors have approved over the past couple, couple of years and how they're, uh, how they're developing for the county. So thank you for, for bearing with us through that. As I mentioned, this next section is, is, is probably the, the longest and always the most anticipated of this session together. We're going to summarize for you here in just a moment what the overarching renewal look like for 2022. And then Trey will get into more depth on how those projections are derived by us. And then Suzanne will share with you, um, a very short list, uh, this year, which I think is a nice change of pace versus last year of recommendations from the benefit advisory board. So with that, let's, let me give you the highlights. I love being able to share good news. I don't get to do it every day or every year, but today I do and I'm excited. Um, so when we look at your medical pharmacy, your dental and your vision renewals on a combined basis, we are looking at a projected 2% increase only. That's just two. That's one digit. That's not two digits like it was the last couple of years. Um, so I hope everybody is, is exhaling a little bit on your end with that number. Um, and that in dollars equates to just over about half a million dollars in total funding increase. So that's, um, that's amounts paid by both the county and employees. Um, that 2% already incorporates BAB recommendations, um, primarily because there aren't that many of them that actually impact budget. Um, and the one that does, um, we had to receive some, we received some earlier in the year, um, directional approval from, uh, human resources. Um, and then we're seeking your formal approval as a result of this process. Had we not incorporated that number into the 2%, it would have been 2.6 instead of two. So very, very minimal impact to the numbers. And we thought for simplicity today, we would just show you everything with the BAB recommendations built right in. Um, so just to give you a sense of how that 2% shakes out, um, you see the chart at the bottom. So there's a variety of components here. And again, Trey will dive into each of these, but you know, the biggest portion of your total budget, representing almost 85% of that in to- of your total budget at the county for, for benefits, is your self-funded medical and pharmacy claims. As a reminder, for those of you who may be, uh, new to this call, the county's, the county's medical and pharmacy program is, um, is self-insured, meaning there is no insurance. There is no insurance company. The county is literally paying the bills to the doctors and the providers as those claims get incurred. Um, and so you pay, um, administration fees to Cigna and all sorts of other expenses to make sure that process happens. But the actual cost of claims, um, we are only projecting a 1.8% increase to that largest component. And as, as, as I like to say, you know, as go your claims, so goes the rest of your budget. So last year, for example, we were projecting a much bigger increase to your claims. And because that represents a bigger portion, the biggest portion of your budget, that translates into a much bigger renewal. This year it's the opposite. Um, there are a variety of fixed expenses that you pay as well. You fund the HSA accounts for those who elect the consumer-driven plan. You pay, as I mentioned, administration fees to Cigna and consulting fees to Aon. Um, those in aggregate are going up just over 2%. You also do pay stop-loss premiums. Anthony alluded to these when he was going through that large claims page. So this is catastrophic insurance protection in the event any individual incurs claims of $450,000 or more. And you pay a premium for that level of protection. And those premiums are going up 11.4%, but they only represent 3.5% of the total. So again, big, bigger percentage increase on a very small portion of the cost. And then as we know now, dental is fully insured as has been vision. Um, by fully insured, I mean, it works like your car insurance. You pay a premium every single month and whatever happens, happens. You just keep paying your premium. Um, those are both under a fixed rate guarantee that we were able to negotiate through last year's RFP process. And so there'll be no increases to those coverages or those premiums, I should say. And you can see the percentage of the total budget that those represent. So before we jump into some of the other renewals, any comments or questions on the, the overall good news of the 2% on this page?
Feels good.
Feel, feel free to, uh, you know, relax, like I said. All right. But just to touch on, on a few other things, um, again, we mentioned the dental and vision. Um, and those rates are, are, we won't have to worry about those for another year for dental and another few years for vision. Um, as far as other renewals, again, just to note, you have a number of coverages with the Hartford. So that's your life insurance, your accidental death and dismemberment, your long and short-term disability and all of your leave administration at the county. Um, those coverages, um, were out to bid as just part of a, a routine procurement arrangement. The good news is of, most of the bidders, including Hartford, came back with some, um, very favorable savings in premium to the county. Um, a bid has been awarded, um, to a new company and then we are in the process of implementing that, that new company for 1-1, uh, which will result in a savings to the county's budget there. Your employee assistance program with Curelink, um, was up for renewal and thankfully they gave you a no change, which is always great, um, until the end of next year when it'll be revisited again. And then the remaining coverages with Hartford, which are all employee funded. So your accident, critical illness and hospital indemnity coverage, those will stay with Hartford. Those are still under a fixed rate guarantee. So no increases coming there for any employees that might be listening. Um, and we'll be looking to do an RFP and, and bid that to the competitive marketplace next year as well, just due to the bidding cycle. And last but not least, the administration fee you pay for flexible spending accounts and COBRA administration. COBRA is, um, a federal law that mandates extension of coverage for those who leave the county. Um, those, uh, those administration fees are all staying flat into 2022 as well. Okay. So to give you a little more context on how we get to such a favorable renewal, um, and I guess, you know, the, the, and how, how mathematically we calculated, I'll turn it over to Trey, our lead actuary.
All right. I thank you all very much. And again, for the record, my name is Trey Sarsfield. I am the, I am Aon's lead actuary for the Boulder County account and have been so for 14 years. Um, basically what I will be walking us through will be how do we get to the overall 2% in total? 2.1% in medical increase for 22 over 21? Uh, this is intended to be an elaboration and a bit more detail through those. It is not intended to, uh, to be any sort of change or any sort of, uh, options at, uh, at the status quo point. So what we have, uh, on slide 22 here would be total expected claims of about $22 million for the medical plan. And then the dental and vision are, as Courtney mentioned, fixed premiums, not expected claims, not variable. They are the fixed, they are the fixed premiums for those two plans. That total adds up to $1.6 million for the dental plan and about $181,000 for vision. Additionally, the county offers a, a seed money, a, a, an account, uh, for the health savings account for the individuals that, uh, select the consumer-driven high-deductible health plan. That is in the amount of $500 for the year for an individual and for $1,000 per year for everyone who signs up for that plan with dependent coverage. Courtney had mentioned, uh, administrative fees to ensure that, uh, your claims are adjudicated and paid properly. That will be about $547,000. Additionally, your consulting and some other program fees, as the footnote says, COBRA, amino, health advocate, and the, uh, the two new programs for, uh, cancer and recovery one, those add up to about $235,000 for 22. And then finally, uh, Anthony had mentioned and Courtney had mentioned your total, uh, stop-loss premium. That is about $906,000 for, uh, 2022. The overall total there, when we look at the medical plan, is about $24.3 million. Adding in the dental and vision gets, we get to the, uh, the, the box on the right where the total expected funding for 2022 would be about 26 and an eighth or 26.124 million dollars. This represents, as we have said, a 2.1% increase to the medical total funding rates or $511,000. And when we look, when we combine the other two with no increases to dental or vision, the same $511,000 translates to an overall 2% of change to the funding rates for 2022 versus. translates to an overall 2% of change to the funding rates for 2022 versus the existing funding rates and annual premiums that are shown below for 2021. From here, we will move into each individual component of this. But before we do that, just want to know if there are any big-picture questions on the overall finances for '22 versus '21? All right. Thank you so much. On our next slide, then, we want to address some, a component that Ramona has spoken to a couple of times, and Anthony and I have also attempted to address a bit. The 2.1% is including no additional restoration to the fund balance, no additional margin. It is truly the expected costs for 2022 based on, based on the differential to the total budgets for 2021. So that is the 2.1% medical, 2% total that you see at the top here. And then with the idea of bringing into the total premiums, the total funding for the year of $1 million, $2 million, or $3 million, you can see that those, that the overall increase from '21 to '22 would become 6.3% for the medical plan at the $1 million level, 10.6% to the medical plan for the $2 million level, and 14.8% to the, to the medical plan for the $3 million level. We will discuss the implication of some of those options, and we will discuss the timing that we would like to address some of these decisions at a future slide. But we do not want to, we do not want to go away from this without allowing your initial reactions and your initial questions, if you have any.
Well, I actually don't understand this at all. So, but if you're going to discuss it, well, what I, what I don't understand is, I understand just transferring some money to restore the fund balance. I don't understand framing it with respect to percentages of the, of a medical plan increase. Is that just the way we would account for it in our budget? That it, that the medical cost would increase by 6.3% or 10.6% or 14.8% depending on how much we elect to transfer in? Or would we, that's, that's the disconnect for me. But if you're going to cover it later, that's.
No worries, Commissioner Levy. I will be happy to explain that high level here. And if that is sufficient, then so be it. If not, we can certainly, we can certainly continue. What we are illustrating here would be if the budgeted rates for the medical plan were to increase by an additional $1 million, $2 or $3 million as well. So it would factor into the overall budgeted rate per plan and per tier. Additionally, it could be, you know, it could be one of the, it could be where we, you know, determine how much we will share the employee increase versus the, versus the county budget increase. But each of these scenarios assume that that will be part of the overall medical plan budget. If there is a, an infusion of capital from a different department or from a different, you know, from a different source that would not need to be part of the medical plan budget, then this would not, then it would not apply to this $1, $2, or $3 million increase. What we are trying to determine here is if we were to look at the medical plan on its own with the rates that are set, if that needs to absorb a, an additional $1, $2, or $3 million, this is how much each individual rate and tier would increase by plan at each of those restoration levels.
And Commissioner, this is Ramona. I can add to that. So basically, you know, in the past, last year, we infused into the fund, from the general fund, $3 million. That was not anything that was added to premiums for employees. This is direct infusion from the general fund. So, so yes, that's an option, what you were saying. The $1, $2, or $3 million could come from your general fund. You know, what Trey is illustrating here is not just infusing money from the general fund, it's incorporating it into a rate increase. With, you know, then we'd have to discuss, you know, what is the rate increase to the county versus the employee if you go those routes? Does that explain it as well, Trey?
I would like to make clear one thing, and I apologize for it being a question as opposed to a statement. But I know that the, the premium rates that we set for 2021 did contemplate a $3 million increase to fund balance as well. So it was, it was not intended to be an outside source. It was intended to be a buildup from the premium and balance, the premium rates and the, the, the budget balance for each plan for the year of '21.
Yeah, you're correct. I'm sorry, I forgot that. I was thinking about, there was one, trying to remember from my, my memory here, but at, right at budget time, we did add, Commissioner Jones, you'll remember this, I think it was an additional million that came directly from the general fund, over and above what was, that you're talking about, Trey. So it was a combination last year. We had the $3 million you're talking about, and then we, we had an extra million at the board infused from the general fund at the last minute.
Ramona, do you, do you want to talk about the philosophy of the percent county pays and the employee pays and keeping these kind of even?
Yeah. If my memory serves me correctly, Trey's at 84% county at this point, or is it 83?
It is actually, the current split, and this is Trey Sarsfield again, the current split is about 81.5% county-paid and about 18.5% employee-paid.
Yeah. And it's, you know, it's just, all I can say to that is it's traditionally been kept at that high level. We just traditionally try to pass on less of the increase to our employees as possible. So we have not changed that percentage. I would say as long as I've been in the budget offices, we've always kept it at that level, trying not to increase the employees' portion. So it is, you know, it's history. I don't want to say it's always the way we've done it, we've done it. Technically, that's a correct statement, but it's the way we do it because we don't want to burden any more than we have to our, our employees. So the county does pay the, the bulk share of any increase.
Well, if I could, before we move to that topic of the philosophy behind how much we charge our employees and that topic, just on, on these, these proposals for the fund balance restoration, Ramona, could you say again what the deficit is right now in the fund?
Well, again, we're still, you know, we're working at, we're working, working that for 2021. The end of 2020, we're still in audit, so I always want to say that this is, you know, preliminary, things can change until the audit is, you know, complete with our audit firm. But it'll be about 1.9% deficit at the end of 2020. And we're not really willing yet to give you a good, you know, a solid estimate for the end of 2021. As you saw in the previous slides, we're all, we're trending forward, you know, claims are down. But again, you know, sometimes November and December can jump up. So we're going to do a really deep dive, starting next week when your Budget Director, Aaron, is, is back in the office. We're going to do a deep dive and really try to get a good projection for you for year in 2021. But for 2020, I can tell you it's, you know, close to 1.9 million negative.
Okay.
So the point I was trying to make is that if you do that $1 million or whatever backfill, if you will, you're getting away from that ratio. And so it's just something to keep in mind when making decisions.
That's correct.
I wanted to ask a question. I had this, a similar, this is Commissioner Loach, I mean, I had a similar question to Commissioner Levy's, just looking at this particular slide and wanting to understand a couple of things. And it sounds like we may be having this conversation a little bit later, but I'm, I would like to know what the difference is in, or I guess it's the why would this be? And when do we have to make a decision if we choose a $1, $2, or $3 million restoration or if we just go with the zero to kind of even us out, per se? And does the BAB get, do they give a recommendation in there as well? There is still some confusion for me, which might not get cleared up right now in a virtual meeting, of what the benefit or what the effects would be if, if we didn't put that in here, or let's say, let's use the $1 million restoration number, if we didn't do that here to reflect the medical plan increase. And we, I don't know what the other options, if where else we could put that. I'm hearing you talking about the general fund as, as the other option that's been used. So those, those are a couple of my questions.
Emily Cooper, are you still on the line? I think. I know that you need to, yeah, and I know, if you just, on the timing, I know that because we have open enrollment coming up, where people choose their plan, we need to know what the increase would be to employees or non-increase to employees. Do you have that date handy?
Yes. Give me just a second here. I believe it's October 27th.
Okay.
And this is Courtney Hutchison at Aon. We do have a slide and just a few that shows all of the decisions that are needed and by what date. So that is on our list. And we show that as the 26th, Emily, for, in our material today. But yes, we tried to anticipate that question because we wanted to give you a sense of your timing.
Okay. Thank you. Well, so then, just as an example, oh, go ahead, Courtney, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just going to say, I think this conversation may become more clear when we get to the premiums themselves. Because what we'll show you is what do, what do you and employees pay today? How does that change if it's just a 2% increase? And then how does that change if you add $1 million, $2 million, or $3 million into it? And then the subsequent decision is if you add $1 million, $2 million, or $3 million into it, do you ask the employees to help subsidize that cost or do you not? So there's really two decisions here. Do you add anything in at all? And if so, do the employees help you fund it? And I guess to answer your other question, the BAB, the BAB recommendations informed the 2% increase. The $1, $2, or $3 million options here were options that the Finance Office asked us to present to you today. So that is not a BAB recommendation.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
All right. Again, this is Trey Sarsfield. Just wanted to recap and, and acknowledge the discussion that we've had so far. I certainly understand that the, the scenarios among these different choices and how will that impact employees versus how will that impact the county is a very important item. And it, what, what I will do as a result is continue down the path of how we got to the overall 2.1, but I will do it on a very high level, and I will do it relatively quickly because I feel those are certainly not unimportant, but not as, not, not, not deserving of as much focus as the overall premium rates, which we will get to in just a few minutes. So Suzanne, if we could move forward to the Slide 24. Courtney had mentioned that Cigna performs quite a few administrative duties, and this is the illustration of the different fees that they charge on a per-employee-per-month basis, which then translates down to an overall annual figure. So for 2021, yeah, I won't read each and every one of these, but for example, the administrative fees in general are $17.74 per employee per month. Given the enrollment that you have, that would be $383,000 in total. And if we were to look at each and every one of those, the mathematic, the math is the same. What we look at, the vast majority of these are not changing the rate from 2021 to 2022. We are adding in, as we have mentioned, the Cigna cancer program, third from the bottom, the, almost $7,000. And we are adding in the recovery program of $1.56 per employee per month, or about $33,500. What this works out to with those $40,000 of costs being somewhat offset by a $10,000 decrease to your Aon consulting fees, is an overall increase to the administrative and other fees of about 2.2%. This does, this does tie back to the overall $1.37 million that we put into the 2022 assumed rates and the $1.34 million that we put into the current 2021 rates. From here, we will briefly discuss stop-loss on Slide 25. This is the amount that the employee, that, that, that the, that Cigna will cover above, above $450,000 for each individual claimant in, in any calendar year. So the overall premium increase is typically 15% to 20% for this type of coverage. And Cigna's stop-loss quote for 2022 is below market level and is a favorable 11.4%. That is, as you can see on the table below, it represents about $906,000 of cost for 2022, which is compared to the $813,000 of cost for 2021. Then we have relatively quickly and certainly very simply, the dental rates, as Courtney had mentioned, are unchanged from '21 to '22 based on the RFP that was conducted last year. Additionally, Delta has guaranteed rate caps that will not exceed 6% for '23, 5% for '24, and 5% for '25, which are right in line with typical dental premium increases in the 4% to 6% range. And then finally, vision is guaranteed not only for 2022, but as we have mentioned, for the remain, for the next five years, for the next four years thereafter, all the way through December of 2025. These rates, $181,000, are what are in the budget for '21, what will be in the budget for '22. And on an enrollment basis, we believe that will be, we know that it will be the same, these guaranteed rates on, on, on an individual tier and individual enrollment basis. We do have a couple of quick items to discuss, the, the back and forth of what was, what was spoken about. I know that we've mentioned some of this already, but at this point, Suzanne, if you could do a quick summary of the BAB recommendations? Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah. So for the record, this is Suzanne Coleman at Aon. I'm a senior consultant and have been working on the county account for about seven years. So what I'm going to walk us through briefly is just a summary of the recommendations that the BAB is making for the 2022 plan design year, or 2022 plan year. The first item is called Prudent RX, and it is a, what's called a copay optimization program. It only applies to PPO plans because of IRS rules. So that means it only applies to the county's hybrid plan design. But essentially, what it allows a member to do is to pay zero out of pocket for certain qualifying specialty medications. And so it uses a manufacturer, drug manufacturer's coupon to save the employees' money out of their own pocket, but it also saves the plan money by allowing the max cost for that drug to be the amount of the couponing. Or rather, the plan gets also the remainder of the coupon amount. So there's no outright cost. Prudent RX, which is run through CVS, your pharmacy program at the moment, they will retain 25% of the savings of using these coupons. But the net savings to the plan is estimated to be about $150,000 a year. The estimated member impact is 37 current members who are utilizing specialty medications that are eligible for manufacturer coupons. So the BAB voted unanimously 10 yes, 0 no in favor of implementing this program. And because of the timing of getting it implemented by 2022, and because there is no financial outlay, we did receive prior approval from Human Resources, but today we are asking for your official approval of implementing that program for 2022. So you'll notice the member impact is blue, noted for positive. And then also the cost impact, which has been included in those renewal projections, it is included at net 2%, is $150,000 in net savings. The next topic that the BAB evaluated is telehealth visits. So right now, because of the COVID environment, the IRS is allowing members to have zero member cost for telehealth visits on both of your plan designs, both the PPO hybrid plan and the HSA qualified consumer, consumer choice plan. The BAB recommends that if the IRS continues to allow for it, that you also continue to allow that zero member cost on telehealth visits. It is a lower cost and more convenient way for members to receive visits. So the BAB is recommending that as long as possible that you maintain that, that decision. It is possible, though, that the IRS will no longer allow zero member cost on telehealth on your consumer choice plan. And that's because it has all those qualified HSA, high-deductible health plan rules about what can be charged, a zero member cost before meeting the planned deductible. So the BAB is recommending that the county still continue zero copay on the hybrid plan, even if you could no longer allow it on the consumer choice plan. even if you could no longer allow it on the consumer choice plan. But it was a much closer vote on that one. So they'll be looking to you to how would you decide based upon, uh, what the IRS comes out with. So for the first item, the BAB vote was 10 yes, 3 no, in favor of continuing the member cost on both plans. The BAB vote on continuing it only on the hybrid plan, if it's no longer allowed on the consumer choice, was 7 yes, 6 no. And just so that you're aware, the current telehealth visit cost is $55. So we feel that both of these, uh, member impacts of these decisions are positive and there's no additional cost impact because these are features that are currently in place. The other two items that the BAB is making recommendations on for 2022 have to do with cancer and diabetes, as was mentioned earlier. So as we mentioned, we put into place a small kind of stopgap support measure for oncology support or cancer support because it is one of the county's highest drivers of plan costs. However, there are also programs outside of what you can tack on with, you know, Cigna or CBS or any other current provider, where you could bring in another vendor, um, who's really focused on making the cancer experience, care, support better and also lower costs for the plan. And so the BAB is recommending a one-time RFP to look at some of these vendors. The cost for that RFP would be $50,000. And then the annual cost of the programs would be, you know, determined based upon that RFP process and what the BAB would like to recommend for 2023, moving forward into that year. So the BAB vote was eight yes, two no, in favor of allocating the $50,000 funds in 2022 for the RFP. And then of course, savings are to be determined in the future. We have not, I should mention, included that $50,000 in our 2% renewal projection, but we could add it in there. So we weren't sure how you would want to pay for that if you approve it. It could either, you know, come out of a general fund or it could be incorporated into the benefits budget and into the rates. So I thought there. And then finally, diabetes program. So I think it was Kelly who had mentioned earlier that the partnership that you have in place right now for diabetes management is through your CVS program. And it's a partnership with Levango. They are severing their partnership as of the end of this year. So we had talked about, do we go out to RFP for this? Uh, we had also talked about, let's look at what we currently have in place. And so we looked at Cigna. Um, they have a program called OMADA that they are able to offer through your current contract. CVS has a new program that won't have Levango, but they're calling it their next gen, uh, total diabetes care program. And then you also have Virgin Pulse in place for your wellness program and they have a partnership with Levango. So we looked at perhaps keeping Levango in the mix. And so the BAB dug into these three programs to determine what they would like to offer or recommend that we offer for 2022. And they recommend offering the Cigna OMADA program, which actually also comes with some expansions over what you're currently doing with CVS. Um, and what that looks like is not only does it manage those people who are diagnosed with diabetes or offer, it's a voluntary program, um, but it also has a huge diabetes prevention component. So it helps to allow people to self-refer, but also identifies people who are maybe at higher risks um, of being prediabetic and helping them manage their lifestyle much earlier on in the process. So hopefully they don't get to that diabetes management stage. It also, um, kind of looks at for comorbid, uh, conditions. So anyone who also identifies as having hypertension with diabetes or prediabetes, they have supports for those programs too. So that is called OMADA Complete. It is via your Cigna contract and that is what the BAB recommends starting in 2022. The cost of the program is 94,000, but after savings, the net savings are another $150,000 estimated savings. The BAB voted 12 yes, 0 no for moving OMADA Complete forward as the recommendation. And just note that we have not included the $150,000 net savings. These are slightly, uh, squishier, uh, softer, um, net savings, um, than we saw with the program on the prior page. So we have not included this, but we could, under your direction, update the projection to include this additional savings as well, um, if you're interested in seeing that. And then the last thing I wanted to point out is that they considered something additional. It has currently been taken off of the plate, but you know, unless you tell us otherwise, they're going to look at it for next year. But there was a bill called Colorado Building Families Act. There's a piece of it that was intended to require unlimited coverage for infertility diagnosis and treatment for individual and small group plans. Now you're not individual or small group. You're a medium to large size group. But it, it was written into the law such that if HHS determined that this was mandated coverage or, and, and outside of the 10 essential health, uh, benefits under the ACA, then the provision wasn't going to be enforceable. And that's what HHS has determined. So currently we've taken it off the plate. But the county does already have fairly generous, uh, benefits in this field. And, and we've written here what you do cover, uh, but they're down in bold in the bottom. The BAB just recommends that let's look at this for the 2023 plan year and make sure that what you are offering under your plans is still in line with benchmarks, both from a, what are we covering? And also what our lifetime limit is because it has a $10,000 lifetime limit. Are those still, um, the norm and what we want to be offering, uh, to county employees? Any questions on those recommendations from the BAB?
Um, I would like to hear a little bit more about that telehealth visit issue and the, that vote. Well, just, I'm not sure I really understand the implications of this and, and, um, maybe you could explain that a little bit better and then the, the close vote and what the factors were on either side that people were concerned about.
Sure. Well, so as far as the implications, prior to COVID, there was a copay and I think it was $30, uh, roughly, um, on the hybrid plan. So if you went to a telehealth provider, you paid a copay. And that was the limit of your exposure. When COVID came along, the IRS changed rules and allowed you to drop that to zero. Because of course, everyone was at home, we wanted to keep people at home, allowing them to have video and phone visits with providers as opposed to having them come into physician offices. And it, it, Courtney, feel free to jump in too, but it, it took off beautifully. And so across our country, we were, we've been trying for almost decade to get people to really engage with their physicians in a telehealth capacity and it really finally took off. Um, once everyone was forced to stay home. It, it saves the plan money. It saves members' time. Um, it's more convenient and with the zero member copay, it's saving them money as well. So due to COVID, the IRS allowed both plans to offer it at no cost. And so if you were on the consumer choice or the HSA plan, if you'll recall, that one has a, a high deductible and then you get things covered at 100%. And that's because it has to be, uh, an HDHP qualified plan under IRS rules. So if the IRS says, okay, COVID's over, we no longer want to allow you to let members on these high deductible health plans pay zero. They've got to meet their deductible first and then you can, uh, charge them zero. If they come back and say that, that's where it was kind of, that's where the vote got iffy, right? So seven people said yes, six people said no. The people who were saying no, it was a conversation of, we like the plans to be equivalent as much as possible. So we don't want people necessarily making a choice to go into the hybrid plan because they only expect to use telehealth services and they don't want to pay the $55 upfront. Even though over time, it could still probably, and probably still would be cheaper. But we, we, those were the people who were saying no. The people who are saying yes is, well, if we can allow anybody to have zero member telehealth, we probably should. So I will caveat all of this by saying, we don't know what the IRS is going to say. And given what's going on with Delta variant, this decision could be kind of far off in the future. So I, you'll see this when we get to a later slide. I am saying that the most important thing for you to decide right now is if the IRS continues to allow for it, do you want to continue to allow zero member cost on both plans? Because that's kind of what we're expecting, um, in the foreseeable future at the moment. We could always come back to you later. If the IRS, you know, decides something one way or another and ask for your feedback at that time. We were just thinking, hey, if we can get your general gut reactions right now on what you, whether you would want to keep your two plan designs the same when it comes to telehealth or whether you'd want to allow them to be different. If, if you're able to think through that now and want to tell us now, then we'd be prepared. And not have to come back to you later.
Okay. Thanks. That's really helpful. And the three no votes on, um, the, uh, in favor, well, against continuing the zero member cost on both plans. I guess post-COVID, that's because I guess they didn't want people to be incentivized for, for telehealth if, um, they prefer to, or penalized, um, for seeing a doc in person or what?
Well, I, I, I could be projecting here, but I believe the, the thought process there was is it, by allowing a zero member cost, the plan is picking up a higher cost. Um, and so they were trying to protect the plan from increased expenses. The alternative there is that a member may decide, well, hey, if I'm going to have to pay for telehealth, I'm going to go have an in-pay, in-person visit and it's going to cost three times as much. We did not talk about that, um, in the meeting, but I believe that's where it's coming from.
Thanks.
I had a question on the second, two of two on that summary. If someone can maybe go to the next slide. Thank you. And just two things. One, one is not a question, it's just a comment. I just want to, again, I really appreciate the BAB for doing that work to look at those options and to not just do calculations, but really to look at all those different, um, pieces on the diabetes program and also being really thoughtful about what else could be added in, as we need to look at a different alternative anyway. So just want to make sure that that's really, um, shared out with that group. And then the, the other question, you talked about an RFP. And so I just wasn't clear if that RFP process that you talked about already happened and that was part of getting to that decision and this recommendation today? Or if that's something separate, just that we'll be looking forward to seeing.
Right. So that is not an RFP that we have done yet. So that would be one that we conduct in 2022 for an effective date of 1/1/23.
Okay. And that would come where? I heard $57,000, but I just, and maybe it's a.
Um, so the, the third bullet on the page, um, that, that's for oncology support programs. Uh, the cost of a one-time RFP and we'd be looking at these kind of carve-out vendors for cancer and the cost would be $50,000. Does that help answer your question? I'm not sure I captured it.
Yes, thanks, because I was confused on where those sat when I was listening. So that's part of the, the ask.
Yes.
Outside of just, do we support this particular program based on?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you support it and, and are you able to fund it with the $50,000? And if yes, where do you want the $50,000 to come from? We can, we can build it in, um, or you can pull it out of another fund.
And I thought, I heard you say that that number isn't included in the 2.1%.
It is not. It is not, but we can put it in there. Yeah, actually, both of the things on this page, neither, neither the $50,000 for an oncology RFP nor the $50,000 estimated savings for the new diabetes program, neither of those is included in the current 2.0 budget projection. But they can be, if you guys want us to add them in.
Thank you.
And, and this is Courtney Hutchison. At the risk of repeating ourselves, the reason they're not included. Um, the first one is not included because, um, we weren't sure if this, if you would consider this a plan expense or more of an HR department expense like other RFP has, activity has been in the past. And for the second one, even though it would be a savings, we conservatively are recommending not to budget for it because it is a very unproven saving. So that would be a conservative approach to the budget. Yep.
Yeah, no question. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. The moment we've all been waiting for, Trey.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Yes, uh, this is Trey Sarsfield again. Uh, where we would like to walk through now is how does the, how does the overall 2.1% factor in to the individual rates for your employees and for your, and for the county? So I will attempt to describe 2021 and show the change into 2022. And then we will certainly go into some more different scenarios. But please do feel free to stop me at any point where anything is unclear or, or even the slightest bit confusing. What we are showing on, uh, on this slide, plan rates and employee contributions. What we show here for 2021 employee rates on the consumer choice HDHP plan, on a monthly basis, the employees that sign up for employee-only coverage are paying $43.63. On a monthly basis, the employees that sign up for the employee plus family coverage are paying $345.91. Then if we look at the hybrid PPO below, the individuals that sign up for employee-only coverage are currently paying $77.55 per month. And those that are covering their entire family are paying just north of $600 per month. So when we look at those monthly rates, times the number that are enrolled in each plan and each tier, those 1,798 individuals together contribute $4.37 million to the 2021 overall, uh, medical, to, to the medical plan. For the employer, for the county rates on 2021, you can see those move from, those, those begin at $626 for the employee-only consumer choice HDHP, up to a little more than $1,500 for the employee plus family. And then on the hybrid PPO, very similar numbers, but that is $625 for the employee only or $1,359 for the employee plus family. That contributes a total of $19.424 million. When we combine those two together in the 2021 total rates column, this is the overall budget rate where very, at the very beginning, Anthony had mentioned that, uh, 2021 so far is about 90% of total budget. This is that total budget. So $23.797 million is the expected outlay for 2021 for costs. From there, what we are looking at is if those are the funding rates that are in place for 2021, what do we need to do to those funding rates to bring them into 2022 expected costs? So what we have done on this slide, because this is the status quo, you know, uh, no, no, and no margin, no, uh, no, no fund balance restoration. We are showing a 2.1% increase to each and every, uh, rate for the employee and to each and every rate for the county. So when we look at an overall increase, we see to the far right, $24.31 million in total costs or a $511,000 increase over the $23.79 million for 2021. The employee-county split on that would be an aggregate 18.4% employee-paid premium in 2021, with obviously the remaining 81.6% being picked up by the county. And if we increase every single rate by 2.1% across the board, then the, the employee-employer split is obviously unchanged. It's just that everything is exactly 2.1% higher. So we are still at an 18.4% employee split versus 81.6% for the county in 2022. I will pause at this point because from here, there are several different scenarios. But I just want to make sure that we understand where we are starting with for the 2.1% increase and what it would look like from an employee increase and, and, and a county increase. Are there any questions? Are there any questions or anything I can further elaborate on this slide?
Thank you. Trey, I I do have a question. I'm looking at that bottom section there. I didn't hear that somehow. So far in the first hour and a half, I think that we've been on. I heard 2.1% and I was interpreting that as 2.1% from the county, but it looks like on here that this would also increase the 2.1% to employees. Is that correct?
That is correct. When we are looking at a 2.1% overall increase and maintaining the employee employers, it would necessitate a 2.1% county and a 2.1% employee increase. So
So go ahead.
No, that that that, please carry on. I was, I'm finished for now.
So just to clarify, then, the other options that you had shown us in the slide or potential restoration fund that were like 6.3% and 18, maybe or 14.8, something like that. Would that then also create that type of a matching percent in increase for employees?
But we have All right, go ahead, Courtney.
Yeah, so let me jump in here. This is Courtney Hutchinson at Aon. So the the short answer to your question is this is a decision you will make. So you can decide as a board if you'd like the county to absorb the entire increase and not change employee premiums at all. Or you can decide as this example shows to share it equally in terms of percentage with both employees and the county. So what we have modeled here is what would it look like if both the county and the employees went up by 2.1%? But that is by no means what has to happen. You could come back to us and say, hey, Aon, show us a version of this where we keep the employee rates exactly the same year over year and the county absorbs the entire increase. But so by all means, that is that is direction we always seek from you following this meeting. And that is a decision point that you that you have the authority to make. Similarly, yes, if we start adding in a million, two million or three million, you too can then decide do the employees help cover that cost or does the county absorb it all? And in the appendix, we've got literally a page that looks just like this that shows every possible one of those scenarios for you. And again, we can model more if we didn't quite capture all the options for you today. I think I always like to hone in because I know we have some members of the public on the line today. You know, what is the change to the employee? And if you really want to isolate that, it's going to be comparing, I don't know Suzanne, if you can sort of move your mouse over it. It's going to be comparing the 2021 employee rate column on the left to the, I'm looking at the dollars, to the 2022 employee rate column right to the right of it. So what you can see is when we talk about a 2.1% increase to the employees, we are talking in some cases pennies changing per month, in some cases, you know, a couple of dollars. So very, very small dollar increases to the employees and that's highlighted in the employee change column there. And again, we've got these exact same exhibits in the appendix for a multitude of other scenario. I hope that helps a little bit with the the decision making that you will do subsequent to this meeting.
Right. So so can you what I'm this is, this is what, and like I said, I must have missed something in a slide already. Because I'm hearing 2.1%, so I thought that was what the county was going to, I didn't hear that the employees were also basically offsetting that increase. Is that correct? Or are we really talking about a 4.2 number? That has to be split between people. I heard you say we can make that decision. But I'm just trying to understand what I heard so far is a 2.1 number or 2.0 number.
I appreciate that the the question. So let me, let me, let me try to clarify. The medical plan premiums in total need to go up 2.1% total. How how that's shared between the county and the employee? What we've modeled here is that they both go up 2.1% in order to make the total also be 2.1%. It's not, it's just kind of all boats are rising as the ocean rises. If if the county were to absorb the entire needed dollar amount here, you can see at the second from the bottom row in in blue, the total increase is 511,000. Right now that's being shared, you know, 94K, 417K between the county and the employees. If we kept the employee number at zero, the county's portion would be going up disproportionately to the total. So it would be going up, I'm doing this rough in my head, it would be going up the full 511, which would be more than a 2.1% increase to the county, even though the total is still just 2.1%. Think of it like a pie. You're trying to slice the pie at the same the same percentage rate as you have today, which will be modeled here, but you can choose to give yourself a bigger slice of the pie if you like. And take a bigger increase. Yep. Does that help a little?
Yeah, I just was not clear on what number we were really talking about and how it's potentially affecting the employees, etc. But we're here now looking at at this slide. So did you say you have, are there more sites coming here that are going to show some of those other alternatives or you're wanting feedback from the board to know if we need to look at some other options?
We have some options in the appendix. We may not have captured all possible scenarios and typically following this meeting, there is a little bit of back and forth on other scenarios you might like to see, and we're prepared to model as many of those as needed to help you make your decisions. And there's no decision or vote today. So but yeah, we can, we can jump to what those other scenarios look like in the appendix, if you like.
And then do we have, if somebody could just share what the the Babs participation in that process would be if if the board said, okay, we've got this information and we do want to look at a couple of alternatives, for example. And if that's never been done before, that's fine, or whatever the what the general process has been. I'm just curious what
Yeah, so typically the BAB does not make recommendations around premiums. It's more around plan design. Although in general, I would say, I don't want to speak for Kelly, and so please chime in, but the BAB saw this slide and in general was comfortable with both employees in the county going up at that 2.1%. Like I said before, that the BAB does not contemplate fund balance restoration. And so any of the other scenarios you're going to see today have not been discussed with that.
Okay, thanks. That helps me understand the the full scope of our looking.
No, I keep, keep the questions coming. I know this is, this is the first time you're seeing a lot of this information.
And this is Ramona again, just to to help out the new board. Traditionally, that is correct. You know, this is where the the BAB has helped with this presentation. So yes, they've seen that employee change there that you're seeing anywhere from 94 cents to 1291. And then correct that the fund restoration is, you know, it's a, it's a board decision how 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 you want to incorporate that or not incorporate that into any premium changes. It is also something I would say, you know, I know we need to make decisions, you know, we said like by October 26th, I I think we said, because we do have open enrollment. But I know we also, as you know, commissioners this week are, you know, looking at total compensation. And that's when we tend to to look at this at the same time as what HR will be recommending for compensation next year. So that that might help you too in making your decisions of, you know, where where do you want to leverage? Sometimes you might leverage one against the other. So that so some, it might help you later this week too, to look at the whole compensation package at the same time as well. And that's just a thought that, you know, we can also talk about that this coming week as well.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
I I have a question and I don't want to cause anybody to have a heart attack. I'm just asking the question. And maybe it's really more for Ramona, but what what is, what what's the consequence of having that negative fund balance? We don't we're not running a deficit. It just means that the amount that we had put into this fund to cover our health, our employee benefits wasn't enough. But we paid all the bills and so what if we don't replenish the fund?
Well, if we don't replenish the fund, yes, we're running a deficit. So it would be like your own budget at home. Their money isn't there to cover, you know, future, future plan enhancements. You know, traumatic cases. And basically you do have to get it back up into a positive rate. When we go on to audit, when we're audited every year, as we are, as long as we have a plan to get all of our funds back into a positive state, our auditors are happy. If there's no plan to bring a fund into a positive state, our auditors do get concerned about going concern and, you know, our our sustainability, because that that negative could grow and grow and grow. You saw that what would happen with the flood, it grows and grows and grows. And then at some point you're getting to a point where with all your funds combined, you're getting into a scary location and you really would have to take money from the general fund at some point and make this fund whole. And we really don't want to, don't want to get to a point where the general fund would take a huge hit because we have a negative fund balance for year after year after year and it grows and it grows and it grows. It does need to be whole at some point. We, you know, we do pool our cash, you know, the treasurers, we do pool cash. But each fund has its own purpose. For example, it's a lot of money, for example, in our open space fund because it's a sales tax based fund, but that money can only be spent on sales tax. So it could never be used to cover these planned deficits. We can only use money that has no strings attached. And that gets, you know, that gets a little dicey eventually when you start, you know, shrinking that pie of what can be used to make us whole. So it is important that the the fund becomes sustainable at some point. That's what an enterprise fund is. And I hope that helps. I know that's kind of a little bit of, you know, governmental accounting, but we can talk about that further. But it is important to get us to a a point where we're self sustaining.
Okay, no, I understand. And again, I was just asking the question. So don't anybody think Commissioner Levy is proposing that we have this day. She's going to upset our AAA rating. No. Not going to do that.
No, I'm glad you asked because it is, it is sometimes hard to understand when you, you know, when we we do have, you know, deposits of actual cash, it's just they all have their own, their own segregated uses and a lot of them are statutory, a lot of them are, you know, voter voter approved. So it does get complicated, but in the long run, yeah, the simple answers, we do have to get positive.
Yeah. And just one other question on restoring that negative fund balance if and this is really a question, I guess, really internally for the commissioners and and you and and our internal folks, maybe more than with Aon, but those were those were overages that were experienced in previous years. And so in terms of, you know, certain equity filters, current employees would be if we did choose to have them bear a cost of restoring that fund balance, they would be, some of them who are new would be bearing a cost that previous employees contributed to.
Well, that, yes, that that would be true of any healthcare plan. Yes, that's, that is true.
Yeah.
All right, this this is Trey again. I would like to suggest, if it is all right with the group, that we cut ahead to slides 44 and beyond, sorry, 41 and beyond, so that we can show you some of the different scenarios that we have looked at. And maybe we can understand how much of that is intended to go towards the individual versus how much is retained by the county. So what we have on slides 41 through 43, and for now, we're going to stick with 41 in this $1 million fund restoration. What we have here is instead of at the very bottom on the far right, instead of the $511,000 increase, we have a $1.5 million increase, which, as we said, is that 6.3. If we were to keep the ratio of 18.4% employee contributions and 81.6% county contributions, then each of those would go up by 6.3%. Or the individual rates would go up by 278,000. The employer, the county rates would go up by 1.23 million. And what you see here in the individual dollar change, instead of the 97 cents to about to about $13, would be $2.77 cent increase for the consumer choice employee only up to a little more than $38 per month for the hybrid PPO employee plus family. What we have here, as we said, is if each, it's if if the county and the employees each bear a 6.3% increase to accommodate a total 6.3% increase. As a counter to this, if we believe that $1 million is the right amount to increase the fund, but the county wants to cover that additional $1 million on their own. Thank you, Suzanne. Slide 44 is our necessary increase here. What we see on the far right is still a 1.51 million dollar increase. But the individuals are back to the original $94,000 increase or 2.1%. When we are increasing the overall total by 6.3, but only asking the employees to increase by a little more than two, what we see there is your employee, your, pardon me, your county costs would go up about 1.4 million dollars or 7.3%. Rather than go into the two and three million dollar pieces to, you know, to to further twist this up, would like to ask if if there are any questions related to the differential between the county taking on the entire million dollar excess versus an even split of a million dollar excess.
You say even, what you're meaning, keeping the 18.4 ratio?
Correct. If if we were to share it on a proportional basis, that 18.4 ratio would stay in place. But as we see on on the the current slide, if we were to say, all right, the county goes up by 7.3%, the the employees go up by 2.1 by by the 94,000, then the farthest right column here shows that employees would then in 2022 be responsible for 17.7% of the total budget and the county would move up to 82.3% of the total budget.
Could, I don't want to, Commissioner Jones, did you have another question or something? I just have a
No, I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't half, half these, it was 18.4.
Okay, well, I just have a, I mean, a thought on on this approach. Which would be if the county, well, so we're phrasing this, framing it in terms of contribution towards premiums that and reducing the employee share to 17.7% and change, you know, changing the ratio. But it's not really their contribution towards this year's healthcare costs. It's, you know, we, if we have the county bear the entire cost of this, this was the scenario with a million dollar contribution, I think, to the fund balance.
That is correct.
It just seems conceptually cleaner just to have that be a general fund payment. Because it's not by putting it putting it in the context of the ratio and a contribution to the healthcare cost. What I worry about is if we've had this split of 18.4% versus 21.6%. And somehow that magic number, it doesn't seem very magic to me, but somehow that's been a stable magic ratio. And the and the ratio declines from the employee side. It's pretty hard to raise it back up again. They, the employees are going to perceive it as as an increase in their share, whereas if the county is going to pay all of this anyway, and it is not in fact to pay the projected 2022 costs. It just seems cleaner not to mess with that ratio and to just have it as a general fund transfer to rebuild the fund balance. Does that make sense? I'm trying to say this clearly using terminology I may be misusing.
Yeah, no, Commissioner Levy, this is Trey Sarsfield again. That makes perfect sense. I I want to make sure that that I reiterate that if we are talking about funds coming from, you know, from other sources, then we are certainly free to go back to the status quo, 2.1% employee, 2.1% county, 2.1% total. And that will maintain the 18.4% for 2021 and for 2022. To your point, if we are asking current employees to share in a fund restoration, then that is asking the 2022 enrollees to pay for some of the deficits that were incurred in the past and not necessarily by the individuals. and not necessarily by the individuals that are currently enrolled. So if there is a, you know, if there is an appetite for and a mechanism for including, you know, in including dollars in the health and dental fund that do not have to come from these contributions, then we can certainly go back to the base scenario of a 2.1% expected 2022 costs being being shared by the employee and the and the county.
Well, and just to be clear, I'm not necessarily advocating that. The, you know, the scenario in which it's shared equally. We maintain that previous ratio, each premium goes up or each contribution goes up 6.3%. There's, there's a certain amount of fairness in that because a lot of these costs were incurred by current employees. And we didn't, and when we set the premium contributions, I'm sure we weren't expecting that we would later come along and and backfill it. So I'm not advocating necessarily that we pay 100% of it. I'm just pointing out if we go that direction, it just seems cleaner not to build it into the into the premium amount and the cost sharing ratio because then we've upset this, you know, this, you know, this ratio and we're sort of, I would think, stuck with it.
Yeah. Hey, it's Courtney Hutchison again. I would, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Jones, is that you?
Go ahead.
Okay, I was just gonna give you, I guess, a few other things to contemplate as you consider this over the the coming weeks before you need to make a decision. So so yes, while while fund balance restoration is in part to to restore money's lost from prior years, it is also in part to ensure you have money to pay the new claims. So as we go into 2022, we want to make sure you have enough money to pay the claims that will that are coming. And Trey and Anthony do a phenomenal job projecting what those claims are. But there's a chance, like we've seen in past years, where your claims are higher than projections. And without a fund balance of any kind to do so, then you will truly be in a deficit situation. So it's a little bit of both. It's a little bit of restoring and a little bit of ensuring you've got prudent funds to cover the unexpected and the and the adverse experience that you may see. I will also offer a couple of market data points. The typical split we see in premiums between employees and employers is typically 80%, 20%. So in a sense, you're already slightly more generous than what is typical in the marketplace, just another data point. And then the last data point I'll leave you with is that it is very, very common to include some form of fund margin restoration, you know, fill in the blank, everybody calls it something different in the premiums and ask employees to help cover the cost. That is by far the norm. So I don't want you to think if you go that route, you'd be doing anything unusual that no other employer is doing. It is very, very common to do what is being illustrated here. And you're absolutely right, Commissioner Jones, in order to maintain the 81-18 split, you would have to raise both the county and employee premiums at the same rate. Otherwise, you're absolutely right. You'll disrupt the split and make it more generous to the employee. So again, just some just some things to be thinking about as you contemplate this and as you ask us for more scenarios over the coming weeks. Again, we're on standby as we always are, following the workshop to model anything else you'd like to see and and talk, you know, ad hoc if we need to about what might be, what might make the most sense for the county.
Well, and you showed, thank you for that, Courtney. And and I appreciate the additional context here and the thought that you know, my thinking was wrong and you said that very well.
Not wrong, just not just wanted to complete the picture. That's all. I hope that's okay.
You can say, no, wrong. But but so this would be, if I remember correctly, this would be a $1 million contribution towards restoring that fund balance. So if we're gonna look at, and you have other scenarios, yeah, there we go. Yeah, that that and that would restore the current fund deficit. And but then we have other factors to consider, whether we may have some savings, whether we haven't projected correctly. But yeah, thanks for bringing this up because I, if we're gonna go that route of trying to restore it, we ought to look at what it would take to actually do restore it.
And thanks, Courtney. I knew what you would say was more informative than what I'm going to say, but that's, this is the point I was trying to bring up earlier. If you, if you put, if you backfill through a reserve or whatever, and I get what you're saying, Clarence, was 2021 and what we're talking about now is 2022. But if you do that, you're really putting your thumb on the ratio, the scale of that ratio in reality. And I just, for me, I like that ratio. I think as an employee, knowing that certainty that the county is picking up more than 80% of it is, I think they like them, sure they like. So I think keeping that ratio and keeping in mind if we do add money, we're affecting their ratio.
Absolutely.
I just had one other question, but I I think we're running against time. So I just want to put it out there, maybe something we can talk about at another time. One of the costs in kind of the estimated budget in the past years, I think it was like 2018, 19, something like that, that showed flu clinic. And so I was just curious from an insurance perspective, if you all are anticipating what you're hearing from other providers and organizations about what that may look like without a without the ability to completely project, but what that might look like for insurance companies to cover vaccine clinics, as an example, or the booster shot clinics types of that we may be able to offer to employees, but that also might change those numbers.
So this is Courtney Hutchison. I I think I understand. Are you, you're asking what would it look like to do to include flu shot and vaccine clinics in your
In one of the slides at the beginning, flu, there was a line item that was included in all of the costs, like medical care costs. And flu clinic was historically a line item, but it's not a current light item. And so I was just curious what in all the research and work that you're doing, if vaccine clinic is then going to, you know, kind of replace that or be an additional potential cost that might be covered in insurance policy for employees.
Yeah. And so I think Emily may still be on the phone. I believe there was no onsite flu clinic at the county last winter just due to COVID and the, and so that's why that was removed from the budget or from the income statement, I should say, as an expense. So if the county brings back onsite clinics of any kind, flu, vaccine, whatever, then yes, it would go back in as an expense to the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem. And in the interest of time, since I know we've got about three minutes scheduled, the the last page we'll leave up here on the screen, which I know I alluded to earlier, is, you know, where, where is the the county seeking your approvals and decisions and by when? So from an approval perspective, I believe the earlier today, you had a business meeting where the stop loss renewal was officially approved by consent. So no additional action should be needed there, just to, just to note. We are seeking your approval on the BAB recommendations, which Suzanne reviewed. So the implementing the new diabetes programs with OMADA, implementing that prudent RX program, which would be a $0 copay change for members on the hybrid plan. The cancer support program, RFP project, and maintaining telehealth at a $0 member cost share for as long as the IRS allows. Those are the recommendation approvals we're looking for from you. No later than that budget hearing on the 26th. And then a true decision where we can do, again, as many iterations and as modeling as you would like us to help you make these decisions. I'll skip the first bullet because Suzanne alluded to that. We don't have to make that decision right away. That's more what if the, what if the IRS changes things, then what do we do? But more importantly, you know, do you want to include, do you, do you agree that the fund balance needs to be restored? And if so, should it come in terms of in the form of premiums or in a supplemental, you know, infusion of funds from general funds? And if it is in the form of premiums, how is that shared with employees, if at all? So those are the true kind of guidance and decisions we need from you and by that budget hearing. And then obviously approval of those official BAB recommendations on or around that same time.
And this is Suzanne Coleman from Aon, jumping in because Emily is in the car and I'm not sure she's with us in the meeting any longer. We've said no later than the 1026 budget hearing. That's when you officially have to approve things is as part of that meeting. Open enrollment starts on November the first. So ideally, you will have some conversations with budget and with HR behind the scenes and be able to tell us sometime in advance of that 1026 meeting, what direction you are leaning and what we should build into the employees' open enrollment benefits guide and build into the online electronic open enrollment system. They they have the team that sets that up has told us that that they could get it done in four days. But obviously, the preference would be that we have time to test out the system and and double check and make sure that everything is correct. So if you're able to make decisions prior to that time, that would be appreciated.
Great. Thank you all for the information today. It's really informative and appreciate the time with the questions as well.
And you'll, I thank you so much. This was really excellent. Will you send us this slide deck? There, there were a couple of numbers I didn't quite have a chance to jot down.
I believe it was uploaded last week. We always try to get it to you about a week in advance. So I know Emily's on mute because she's joined via phone now, but I believe it was uploaded on Tuesday or Wednesday of last week.
Oh, to SharePoint where
In the minute track, I believe. But we'll find that out then.
Oh, okay, thanks. Yeah, I usually try to download and save them because then I know. Oh, there's Natalie. Good old Natalie. Okay.
Yes, if for some reason it didn't come through, by all means, let us know and we can resend it to you directly.
Yeah, I just like to download and save because then I know how to find it wherever I am. So
Agreed, agreed. All right.
Great. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all so much for your time. We really appreciate the questions and engagement.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Steph.
Free or Natalie, can you turn off YouTube? Seem to have a control for that.
Hey, Jared, it's Natalie. I don't have the control either. It looks like it's on Breeze.
Okay, well. All right. Well, I'm gonna be leaving this and so there's nothing going on in here anyway, but
Yeah, I'll make sure it turns. Yeah, I'll, I'll double check when you end this, that it's not still streaming.
Okay, all right. I will see you later. Thanks, Natalie, for all your help.
Thanks, Jared. Bye.
Bye.